I'd like to call the City Council to order. Agenda for a special meeting, City Council of the City of Blue Island, Illinois, Monday, May 10th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. In front of our 1891 City Hall, 13051 Greenwood Avenue, Blue Island, Illinois, 60406. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. The flag. America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever. Thank you. Clerk, can you take the roll call?
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya. Alderman Rita. Alderman Fairwall. Alderman McGee. Alderman Carr. Alderman Rol. Seven aye's, your honor.
Thank you, clerk. Our certification of election results. Mayor of Blue Island, April 6th, 2021, Randy Hauser, 1,024 votes. Fred Bellato, 1,492 votes. Domingo Vargas, 391 votes. City Clerk, City of Blue Island, Cheryl Mitchell-Brown, 1,003 votes. Rayanne Contello-Zilman, 1,436 votes. Carolyn Pace-Green, 429. City Treasurer, Tom Hawley, 1,361 votes. Hiro Frausto, 1,509. First Ward, Annette Alexander, 120. Dexter Johnson, 156. Second Ward, Luis Esparza Jr., 137. Luis Montoya, 320. Third Ward, Stephanie Arvello, 86 votes. Nancy Rita, 195. Fourth Ward, Bill Fairenwald, 300. Reyna Alvarado, 168. Fifth Ward, Gabriel McGee, 243. Eire Betis, 177. Sixth Ward, Lauren Trinidad, with 203. Candace Carr, 293. Seventh Ward, Josh Rol for 247. Judy Tovar-Vacera, 162. And Alan Stevo, 68. Certification of election results from the April 6th, 2021 consolidated election. So we'll continue on with the public swearing in. This is ceremonial swearing in. We already had our first meeting last Friday. So I'll call up all aldermen, one by one, and our judge will swear them in. And then if I ask if you can stay up here, pick a spot, after we swear you in, just stay on up here. So we'll start with the first ward, Alderman Dexter Johnson.
Sir, will you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Dexter Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Alderman of the First Ward.
Of Alderman of the First Ward.
Of the City of Blue Island.
Of the City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have the second ward, Luis Montoya.
Hello.
Hello.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Luis Montoya.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Alderman of the Second Ward.
Of Alderman of the Second Ward.
Of the City of Blue Island.
Of the City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Alderman Nancy Rita, from the Third Ward.
I state your name.
I, Nancy Rita.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Alderwoman of the Third Ward.
Alderwoman of the Third Ward.
Of the City of Blue Island.
Of the City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Bill Fairenwald, Fourth Ward.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Bill Fairenwald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Alderman of the Fourth Ward.
Alderman of the Fourth Ward.
Of the City of Blue Island.
Of the City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Fifth Ward, Gabriel McGee.
I state your name.
I, Gabriel McGee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman of the Fifth Ward.
Of the office of Alderman of the Fifth Ward.
Of the City of Blue Island.
Of the City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Sixth Ward, Alderman Candace Carr.
I state your name.
I, Candace Carr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The office of Alderwoman of the Sixth Ward.
The office of Alderwoman of the Sixth Ward.
Of the City of Blue Island.
Of the City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Seventh Ward, Alderman Joshua Rol.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Joshua Rol.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The office of Alderman of the Seventh Ward.
The office of Alderman of the Seventh Ward.
Of the City of Blue Island.
Of the City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
City Treasurer, Hiro Frausto.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Hiro Frausto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The office of Treasurer.
The office of Treasurer.
Of the City of Blue Island.
Of the City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So help me guide. City Clerk, Rayanne Contello-Zilman.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
Rayanne Contello-Zilman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The office of Clerk.
The office of Clerk.
Of the City of Blue Island.
City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, ma'am. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Fred Bellato.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The office of Mayor.
The office of Mayor.
Of the City of Blue Island.
The City of Blue Island.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So if the council will forgive me, I have a short speech, and then we'll go right to the agenda items. So I'd like to thank you all for being here today, on the first day of what I believe is a new beginning for Blue Island. I particularly want to thank the city staff and several volunteers for their hard work in helping us put the ceremony and reception together. On behalf of Clerk Contello-Zilman, Treasurer Frausto, and all the newly members of the City Council, I want to thank Judge Regina Mescal for presiding over our swearing in today. We are honored to be joined today by several dignitaries. State Representative Bob Rita. Former City Treasurer and my father and my biggest supporter, Carmine Bellato. Former City Clerk, Randy Hauser. Former Mayor of Calumet Park and current Calumet Township Clerk, Joe Dupar. Calumet Township Assessor, Angel Infante. District 130 member, Kevin Piper. Former Alderman of Seventh Ward, Jim Klinker. Calumet Township Trustee, Rosalind Priest. Orland Township Highway Commissioner, Antonio Robino. Blue Island Park District Commissioner, Michael Cindy. Former Seventh Ward Alderman, George Pullos. District 130 Board Member, Bill Warner. Former Second Ward Alderman, William Cazares. Calumet Township School Trustee, Octavio Carvajal. Former Alderman, Johnny Ringo Hill. Thornton Township High School District 205 President, Nina Graham. Blue Island Park District Commissioner, Bill Ochoa. Blue Island Park District Commissioner, Vinnie Franchetti. Maureen Valley Community College Board Member, Joe Murphy. Former Alderman, Nancy Thompson. Former Alderman, Raymond Contello. Former Alderman, Kevin McDermott. Former Alderman, Kathy Spaziri. Former Alderman, Joe DeNovo. District 218 Board Member, Candace Contello. Former Alderman, my sister, Carissa Barini-Bellato. Former Alderman, Mark Patasko. District 130 Member, Lindsay McGee. Former School Board President, School Board Member, Tomas Elmazan. District 218 Board Member, Sarah Kaliski-Rol. District 218 Board Member, Bill Christian. Where you at, Bill? I hope I didn't miss anybody. Pam Castro, District 130, I'm sorry. Teddy Ruthenberg, Park District, President. Anybody else I forget? A lot of officials here. I would not be here today without a lot of people. First and foremost, my wife Stephanie and my three children. Thank you for your unwavering support and all the things that I find myself in. I love you very much. And I think it's important to recognize all the spouses, partners, and family members who support the officials being sworn in today. Despite what some might say, public service is not an easy task. It is often thankless and involves many long nights and missed engagements. Our families and friends each give a lot of themselves to support us. So a round of applause for all our families, please. Today, we celebrate a new day in our city government. Transition provides us all an opportunity to take stock and give an honest assessment of our city as it stands now. And more importantly, where we want it to go and where we want it to be. I don't think I'll get much disagreement on this stage when I say that a new day and a new approach is well overdue. These past years have been ripe with challenges. In Blue Island, even before a global pandemic rewrote the rules of how we live our lives, we struggled to build a city that works for the people. I take office with my eyes wide open to the obstacles ahead. From what, as we know, repairing our infrastructure to restoring public confidence in city government, there is no shortage of the tall tasks ahead for all of us. And if we are succeeding in eventually solving our most pressing challenges, we must commit to leaving our old arguments behind and forging a new and better path built on cooperation and trust. I also take this office today fully aware that we are emerging from a very spirited and competitive election, and that we are now called upon to come together for the best interests of the city. To each member of this newly City Council, I offer this. We ran on two different party platforms, but they were not all that unlike, and I do think they're able to mend. Unite Blue Island and move Blue Island forward, and we can do both. And each of us is going to fulfill our promise and deliver for our constituents. We must shed party labels and work for one cause, the welfare and prosperity of the people of Blue Island. We have been entrusted. We have been entrusted with the stewardship of our city, and that call of service is more important than any political grievance. With that in mind, I'm asking this council to join me in uniting the city we love. I'm asking you for support this administration and help us move forward away from the old arguments and gridlock, away from negativity and division. Let us use today to start a new, a new council, a new mayor, new clerk, new treasurer, a new city structure, and a new vision. A vision that puts our constituents first, that steers us away from the visions of the past and actually builds the city government committed to responding directly to our constituents. Blue Island is my home, and I believe it in every fiber of my being. On our surface, we have cracks. Anyone can look with the naked eye and see our divisions. But beneath those cracks at the core of Blue Island is a spirit rooted in generations across time, born in all parts of the world and united here in this city. Our strength is in our roots, in our diversity, and in our spirits. That has never changed about Blue Island. It has only gotten richer over time. I believe that core, that spirit will guide us through these challenges and guide us to more prosperous days. I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we start a new day in Blue Island. Thank you, and God bless Blue Island. We need a motion to approve the City Council minutes from April 30th, 2021.
Mr. Ray? Are we gonna do this outside?
Real quick, yep, we're gonna go through it.
I've got a lot of stuff to talk about tonight.
We'll do it right here, that's what the whole thing is, I'll do it.
I've got a lot of paperwork, we've got an hour at least worth of stuff to go over tonight.
I don't think we do.
I think we do. I table everything.
All right. Motion to approve the City Council minutes from April 30th, 2021.
I make the motion.
Is there a second? Motion's made in second. On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Seven ayes, your honor.
Need a motion to approve the City Council minutes from April 13th, 2021.
A second.
Motion's made by Alderman Rol, seconded by Alderman Rita. Any questions? Clerk, take the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Seven ayes, your honor.
I just think that last session, Dr. Thomas first, I think it goes to be this time exactly. We just printed the same one off because of roll calls.
All right, motion's carried. We have public comment? If there's any public comment, please step up to the microphone. Turn the switch on.
Good evening. My name is Michael Smith. I am a resident of Riverdale. I'm here in support of Mr. Bellato, my former teacher at Thorn. So proud of him. Mr. Bellato encouraged me to get into politics about probably 10 years ago when I served as a trustee in Dixmont. And he's always been a supporter, always been there for wisdom and knowledge, and so I look forward to seeing some great things that he does here in Blue Island and to say that my mom is a resident of Blue Island, and she did cast her vote for you, Mr. Bellato.
Thank you. Any public comment? Thank you. Any other public comment?
I feel like we're all together.
Yes. Any other public comment? Moving on.
We're ready. Run!
All right, we have number eight, reported city officials. We have a resolution, 2021-012, resolution consenting to the mayoral appointment of the city attorney. I appointed Montana Welsh temporarily at our last meeting, and I'm asking for a ratification of their appointment to city attorney. So we need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's made by Alderman Rita.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alderman Carr. Any question?
Move to table.
There's a motion to table, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Alderman McGee, we need a roll call to table.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya. Alderman Montoya, nay. Alderman Rita.
Nay.
Alderman Rita, nay. Alderman Fairwall.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
Nay.
Alderman Carr, nay. Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Alderman Rol, aye. Mayor Bellato.
Motion's been tabled. We have number two, Ordinance 2021-013, an ordinance of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending Chapter 30, City Council, and Chapter 31, City officials, of Title III, Administration of the Code of Blue Island, Illinois. This is basically a housekeeping ordinance that I proposed several weeks ago, at least a week ago, basically eliminating three positions that are in the ordinance for me to appoint to two city administrators and changing city councils from Tuesdays to Wednesday nights and committee, setting up a committee of the whole. So I'm asking support of this ordinance. We need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Rita, motion?
Second?
I'll second.
Move to table.
Motion's been made to table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alderman McGee. Any question? Roll call's to table.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya.
Nay.
Alderman Montoya, nay. Alderman Rita.
Nay.
Alderman Rita, nay. Alderman Fairwall.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
Nay.
Alderman Carr, nay. Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Alderman Rol, aye. Alderman Bellato?
It's been tabled. It's been tabled. So we'll skip number three. Number four is Resolution of 2021-014, Resolution of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, appointing Fred Bellato as the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized Agent for the City of Blue Island. The previous agent's always been the mayor. I don't have anybody to appoint just yet, so it looks like temporarily it's gonna have to be me. This is a non-paid position, it's more of a point of contact. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions?
Table.
Motion's made to table by Alderman Fairenwald, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alderman McGee is seconded. Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya.
Nay.
Alderman Montoya, nay. Alderman Rita.
Nay.
Alderman Rita, nay. Alderman Fairwall.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
Nay.
Alderman Carr, nay. Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Motion's been tabled. Number five, we have motion to approve payroll for April 30th, 2021 for the amount of $353,258.12. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Rol.
Alderman Rita and seconded by Alderman Rol. Is there a question? Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya, aye. Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Rita, aye. Alderman Fairwall.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwall, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Carr, aye. Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Seven ayes, your honor.
Motion carries. Number six, motion of approved accounts payable for May 11th, 2021 for $597,447.29. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Rol, is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Montoya. Any questions?
Question.
Question, Alderman Johnson.
Did we get any results from the Tahoe investigations or Aikman?
We did not. Services rendered, I just asked for everything that's outstanding, including any attorney bills to be placed on the agenda, so we start with a clean slate.
I understand what you're saying, Mayor Bellato, but since he didn't give us the results that he promised, I don't see that it was proper for us to be able to pay him.
You can make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made to amend, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Alderman Fairenwald, any question? Roll call for the amended bill accounts payable.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya, nay. Alderman Rita.
Nay.
Alderman Rita, nay. Alderman Farwell.
Aye.
Alderman Farwell, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Carr, aye. Alderman Roll.
Aye.
City Attorney, is that five?
It is five.
It's five ayes.
Five ayes? Five ayes, motion carries. All right, Mayor's announcements. I'm temporarily appointing Thomas Wogan as Director of Municipal Services, and I'm temporarily appointing Mark Petaska as Director of Finance Administration. City Clerk's announcements.
No, no announcements, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any bids? No bids? City Treasurer, we have an approval of treasurer's report. Is there a motion?
Part of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What appropriation covers the appointments you just made?
Yeah, the money is in the appropriation, plus there is a contingency I found that the City Council approved that is an excess.
All right, we have a, uh, I'd like to have a ruling from the city attorney on the, in writing, it's fine, it's later date.
So it's about the appropriation?
About the two appointments that the mayor just made?
They were temporary appointments.
But I'm not aware of an appropriation that covers them.
So there's a general administration, uh, line, and there's a line item for contingency which has $900,000.
All right, could you, uh, give us a written, uh, opinion on that? Thank you.
Sure.
We need an approval of a treasurer's report. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Carr.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Rita. Is there any question? Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
No.
Nay. Alderman Johnson, nay. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya, aye. Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Rita, aye. Alderman Farwell.
No.
Alderman Farwell, no. Alderman McGee.
No.
No.
Alderman McGee, no. Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Carr, aye. Alderman Roll.
No.
Alderman Roll, no. That is, one, two, three ayes, Your Honor.
Motion fails. Approval of interfund transfers from unrestricted to restricted accounts. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. On the question? Motion's made to table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alderman Roll. On the question? Take a roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya.
Nay.
Alderman Montoya, nay. Alderman Rita.
Nay.
Alderman Rita, nay. Alderman Farwell.
Aye.
Alderman Farwell, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
Nay.
Alderman Carr, nay. Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Four ayes, Your Honor.
All right, motion's been tabled. Under City Attorney, we have Ordinance 2021-010, An Ordinance Authorizing a Special Use for a Movie and Live In-N-Out Theater Use in Blue Island, Illinois, the formerly Lyric Theater on 12952 Southwestern Avenue. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's made by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Rita. Any question?
Um, I, I have a question. Uh, what kind of movies and live performances do you think are included in the movie?
It was a multi-use, uh, application that went through planning and zoning, I believe, and special events, no full kitchen, rental, uh, possibilities. They lowered the, um, attendance from 1,000 to about 200 to 300 total amount. They made, uh, leeway into where the parking would be, including, uh, transportation to different sites. It went through the whole cutting process. It was actually on our agenda for a few weeks ago.
Long as it's family-friendly.
Any other questions? You need a roll call?
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya, aye. Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Rita, aye. Alderman Farwell.
Aye.
Alderman Farwell, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Carr, aye. Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Alderman Roll, aye. Seven ayes, Your Honor.
Motion carries. We have Ordinance 2021-011, An Ordinance Improving the First Amendment to the Land Lease Agreement between the City of Blue Island and Wide Open West Illinois, formerly known as WOW, or was called WOW when we discussed this at City Council. It's the land that's being leased by Public Works Garage. We negotiated back and forth with former city attorney Kerry Borvath and for the larger amount. Um, it was on the previous council agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Farwell. Is there a question?
Um, I actually do have a question. Uh, has, has any lease option to purchase, uh, been even mentioned by any chance?
Purchased by who?
By Blue Island.
We own the property. They're leasing from us.
Oh, they're leasing from us.
They're leasing from us, and we negotiated through finance several meetings back and forth. I believe, Alderman Johnson, we, we worked on an agreement where they pay us an increased amount over 15 years or so compared to our last sum. So we took the longer option for an increased amount overall. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya, aye. Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Rita, aye. Alderman Farwell.
Aye.
Alderman Farwell, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Carr, aye. Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Seven ayes, Your Honor.
All right, motion carries. Number nine, Request All Manic Action Items. Alderman Farwell has two resolutions on the agenda. We have Resolution 2021-015, a resolution of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, retaining the Legislative Council, establishing fees, and approving a retention agreement. Uh, we met, and I put this on the agenda. We've miscommunication. I didn't think we were going back and change. All right. So there's a motion by Alderman Farwell. Is there a second? Alderman Johnson. Any question?
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Motion's been made to table by Alderman Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Rita, on the question, to the table. Roll call to table.
Alderman Johnson.
No.
Alderman Johnson, no. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya, aye. Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman Rita, aye. Alderman Farwell.
No.
Alderman Farwell, no. Alderman McGee.
Nay.
Alderman McGee, no. Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Carr, aye. Alderman Roll.
No.
Three ayes, Your Honor.
Motion failed. May it... to table?
Yes.
Motion passed the table, right?
No, no, failed.
Okay, so we're back to the motion to pass or turn down. So the motion was made and seconded. Is there any other questions? We need a roll call to approve or not approve Resolution 2021-015.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson, aye. Alderman Montoya.
Nay.
Alderman, uh, Montoya, no. Alderman Rita.
No.
Alderman Rita, no. Alderman Farwell.
Aye.
Alderman Farwell, aye. Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman McGee, aye. Alderman Carr.
No.
Alderman Carr, no. Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Four ayes, Your Honor.
And I get to vote, and it's gonna be no.
Motion, motion fails because on this type of resolution, you need five votes.
Motion fails. Number two, Resolution 2021. And we can get into this, same thing we've heard before with my patriots on the council before. If it has to do with finances, it has to be a majority of City Council. Majority of eight is five. So Resolution 2021-016, A Resolution of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, Appointing Members and Chairpersons to the City Council Standing Committees and Establishing Committee Meeting Dates and Times. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Farwell, Alderman Roll is seconded. Any question? Roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
No.
Alderman Johnson, no. Alderman Montoya.
No. No.
Alderman Montoya, no. Alderman Rita.
Aye. Oh, sorry, Rita, sorry.
Alderman Rita.
This is the, the committees submitted by Alderman Farwell?
No.
No. Alderman Rita, no. Alderman Farwell.
Aye.
Alderman Farwell, aye. Alderman McGee.[1728.13]